Welcome to the March ninth, two thousand and twenty regularly scheduled work session. Tonight, there are three items on our agenda. A public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk before the agenda item has been read. If you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit that you have the authority of said organization. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you wish to speak, bring your public comment cards to the city clerk now. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. City, um, Tammy, do we have any public comment cards?
No, I have not had any submitted.
Okay, so if you would please sound the first agenda item.
First agenda item is discussion of golf cart use on City of Milton streets. Chief Rich Austin, Robert Drury.
Greetings, Mayor, members of council. Popular topic we've had is golf carts in their use in the city. So golf carts, also known as personal transportation vehicles according to state law. These personal transportation vehicles are PTVs, or basically any motor vehicle that has all the following components. They have at least four wheels, they're capable of a maximum level ground speed of twenty miles per hour or less, and maximum gross vehicle weight of just over thirteen hundred pounds, capable of transporting not more than eight persons. Get a lot of questions in the police department about PTV usage, and so it's helpful to talk about some of the things that are not considered PTV. Certainly any type of mobility aid for persons with disabilities, electric personal assisted mobility devices, power wheelchairs, assistive scooters, any of those would not fall under this definition. The legal definition of a PTV also does not include ATVs or multi-purpose off-highway vehicles, or probably commonly heard them called gators. These are certainly made for off-road, they go well above typically above twenty miles per hour, so they certainly do not fit this definition. So under current state law, which is where we're at right now, Milton does not have a golf cart ordinance or a PTV ordinance, safety requirements. You must have a sufficient braking system, reverse warning device, main power switch, headlights, reflectors, taillights, horn, rearview mirror, safety warning labels, and seatbelts. So much like a motor vehicle, meaning the components of a motor vehicle, they're already required by state law. Like I said, we get a lot of questions in the police department about PTV usage, so I thought I would go over the main questions that we get, and I know some of you have gotten as well. Do our citizens have to have a driver's license to drive a golf cart on a public street? The short answer is yes. State law does mandate that drivers of PTVs possess a current valid driver's license. That does not include a permit, does not include a suspended or expired driver's license. It must be a current valid driver's license, just as if they were going to be driving a motor vehicle. There is an exception, but this is only if the city were to enact a what's called a PTV transportation plan, which is outlined in the state law, and Public Works is going to talk about that in a few minutes. But that would only be valid for pathways that also do not allow motor vehicle traffic as well. So it would have to be a PTV only or low-speed vehicle only path, not on a public street, however. There are exceptions. You may have heard some citizens say, well, my friends live over Peachtree City and their teenager's able to drive their golf cart, or maybe perhaps with an adult. There are several municipalities that were grandfathered in prior to January first, two thousand and twelve, that already had these PTV ordinances. So if a city is not grandfathered in, they at this point cannot enact ordinances to circumvent the licensing requirements. So where may golf carts be driven according to state law? Well, the statute limits operations to roadways where the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour or less, and also no PTVs may be driven on or across state routes. So there could be crossings designated by GDOT, but that would have to be through an application process. Milton currently does not have any PTV crossing areas. So get this question a lot, do these laws apply to gated communities, private streets? According to state law, PTV laws are not applicable to gated communities or other privately maintained streets. However, HOAs can enact covenants to restrict golf cart usage, but again, the police department cannot enforce those. Every once in a while, we'll get a call to a gated community, someone says, well, our HOA doesn't allow this, so we need for you to get these folks off the street. That has to be between the governing authority, the HOA, and that person, we really can't enforce the HOA rules. So if the city were to adopt a PTV transportation plan, the governing authority of that property, the HOA or the landowner, they can grant consent to be a part of an overall transportation plan, which may include, under certain circumstances, private property. And we certainly do not have that at this point in Milton. So off the roadway and private roads, I said we have no enforcement authority, but there are a few caveats. We can always enforce private property or public for reckless driving, DUI, vehicular homicide, and hit and run. That's throughout the state. Next, we'll have our Public Works representatives come up and talk about the transportation aspect of PTV usage.
First, we took a look at what's in some different planning documents that we have, as well as our code related to to multi-use trails, and some of those that reference the golf cart use on the trails. The two thousand and twelve LCI study, you can see the quote from that that document that that we should consider walker, biker, equestrian, even possibly low-speed motor vehicles, segways, or golf carts. Then in the Crab Apple Form Base Code, there's a definition related to multi-use trails and a width associated with that of, it's recommended a minimum of twelve feet. Then looking at the ASHTO, that's American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, their their guideline document is from their bicycle facility manual, and that's set up for looking at facilities where you'll have a mix of of multiple uses, and this one's related to bicycle and pedestrians using the same path. Eight foot is the minimum, that's that's assumed for safe passing of two-way traffic. So that four feet kind of for each direction. And then the recommended, if you have frequent opposing directions of travel, the ten to twelve feet comes into play. Then in our Milton Trail Development Standards, we've identified, similar to ASHTO, that eight foot's the minimum and ten is a preferred width in those cross-sections that are part of the code. Comprehensive transportation plan typically does look at multimodal type improvements. This is a, the graphic on the right is a clip from our latest CTP, which was adopted in two thousand and sixteen, and it it references, of course, the the activity nodes of Crab Apple and Deerfield, as well as the four hundred corridor, looks at the where there's developments of regional impact and where there's LCI studies. We'll be looking to do an update to that plan in two thousand and twenty-one, and one option is that as part of that study, we could expand the scope to for the the multimodal options to look at golf carts. And just wanted to highlight the components of a transportation plan are typically looking at existing conditions, determining needs, and making recommendations. So from from our last transportation plan and kind of those activity nodes, wanted to look at Crab Apple kind of as a as a case study here for where we have developments, where we have destinations, where we have different speed roadways and subdivisions that connect, that sort of thing. So this map shows in the kind of the dark blue is where all we have pedestrian crossings in the Crab Apple area. It shows some of the planned developments that are underway. And yeah, some of these developments are could be possible PTV destinations. The blue box along Crab Apple Road, that's that's the area that we're going to be looking at in more detail in the upcoming streetscape and pedestrian improvement study. Then as a focus area in our current trail planning that's going on, this is a map for the Crab Apple area. The orange are either sidewalks or multi-use trails that exist, and the pink is really what's being proposed under this trail plan. Some of the dark blue is is the road infrastructure that's underway right now with the northeast and Charlotte Drive extension. Then looking at that same map overlaid where there's the state routes, which as the state law says that PTVs are not allowed on state routes, and then also show any of the the local roads that are greater than twenty-five miles an hour. And then to look a step further, along all those roads where PTVs would be required to use a multi-use facility, wanted to look at where there's multi-use trails along those roads. So that primarily primarily exists on Crab Apple Road, you can see in the yellow. And citywide, our twenty-five mile, twenty-five mile an hour roads are typically all of our all within subdivisions. Heritage Walk is an exception, it's a twenty-five mile an hour road, and then our gravel roads are twenty-five miles an hour or two. So those would be the the ones that would could possibly allow PTVs. Did some research and found one permitted state route crossing, not saying there's not others, this is just the one that was able to find, and that's in Peachtree City. They don't, this was from one of their their brochures, this language that no golf carts are allowed on or across, and then it lists the the state routes. They do have one one authorized crossing, and this picture shows shows the approach to that, it's actually a traffic signal. They have the golf cart crossing sign, and they advise carts to cross as a vehicle, not in the crosswalk. We did run some scenarios by GDOT and Federal Highway as it related to a submittal for a hybrid beacon. So the the term for the hybrid beacon is a pedestrian hybrid beacon. It used to be referred to as a HAWK, a high-intensity activated crossing beacon, but the latest term is a pedestrian hybrid beacon. And the review of that, I'll show the next two slides, we'll have have what was submitted for their review. And ultimately, what came back from from GDOT Federal Highway was that it's for pedestrian movements only, they don't want to mix additional uses. They didn't even recommend bicycles use the hybrid beacon just because of the the crossing times that those are programmed for. And then wanted to highlight, I've got another slide too on future options as we look at that Crab Apple Road section for the future study. So this was a graphic that was submitted showing a sign with the the multiple uses of a golf cart, pedestrian and bicycle with a hybrid beacon signal, and the location proposed was where we currently have a pedestrian flashing beacon, so to upgrade it to to more of the hybrid signal. And again, this was this was denied to use multiple uses for crossing, as was submitted to GDOT. And then some future options we could look at as we're we're doing the Crab Apple Road study. We've talked about a pedestrian-only crossing with a a signal around the Dunbrody Avenue intersection of Crab Apple Road. There'd be a potential to look at a combined crossing traffic signal. That was again in the in GDOT's review, if we have locations with multiple uses crossing the road for golf carts, bikes, pedestrians, that a a traffic signal would be a more appropriate choice than trying to trying to cross all of those with a hybrid beacon. So a task a walk does meet the signal spacing, but that'd be something we would need to have further discussions with GDOT if that's something we're interested in pursuing. We can also talk to them about potential of crossing golf carts at the roundabouts. Those are designed for twenty-five miles an hour, but they're they're just posted an advisory twenty-five. The Birmingham Highway is a single roundabout, so it would just be a single lane of travel crossing. The Crab Apple Road is a multi-lane, so that does get get more complicated in looking at that as a crossing.
So where we go from here? That's our that's our first question that we want to put out there. We've come up with three next steps, if you will, and tried to put them chronologically. The first thing we need to decide to do is, council needs to decide to do is, do we adopt our own PTV, personal transportation vehicle ordinance, in which we have a also have a transportation plan? Or do we just rely and continue to rely on state law as as our guide? That's probably the most immediate step. Independent of that, we do, we can look at state route crossings as as Ms. Leaders referred to, further options along Crab Apple, but she also indicated that that may warrant traffic signals. But the application has to be made to the Georgia DOT. And a third independent would be, as our transportation plan comes due in two thousand and twenty-one, is modified a scope to include pedestrian, personal vehicles, personal PTVs in that transportation plan, and that'll give us a better scope, a better idea, but that's not for another year or so. So that's where we're at, those are the three steps that we've identified. Again, the immediate the immediate concern is, do we adopt our own ordinance, or do we just continue to rely on state law? So I think that opens up discussion from this point on.
I have a question, and Mayor Man, I've covered it, you know, we talked about and Sarah mentioned that, you know, neighborhoods are mostly twenty-five miles an hour and whatnot. If a neighborhood is gated, does that make any difference as the law right now?
We cannot enforce in gated communities, so it's up to the HOA whether or not they want to allow that.
So in a gated community right now, they can use the golf carts?
Yes, we don't have any enforcement authority in gated communities for that, unless it's DUI, reckless driving, vehicular homicide, something like that, but not just for general usage.
Joe?
The HOA may have covenants against it, so so it depends, if if it's a gated community, the city doesn't have control, but now the HOA has control.
Right.
I have a question.
Okay, Carol?
It's not clear to me how many people are asking about this. Like, do you get one question a month, or do you get inquiries all the time?
Yeah, it's a good question, because I I don't hear much on it, but.
I've not, yeah, it's never come up, I don't.
We got this through council.
Okay, well, how many people out there?
I get a few in Crab Apple.
Oh, in Crab Apple, okay. Are these people who already have a golf cart?
Yeah. Laura?
And then also, I've I've had a few that have are in HOAs that restrict them, and so understanding that we don't have oversight there is an important part of that.
What what is it, did they say they want to be able to zip around Milton, or on the road, or off the road? I mean, on the sidewalk, I mean, I don't really know.
Well, most of the people that I've heard from want to be able to come to Crab Apple in in a golf cart, and then, which they can, right? And then.
Yeah, as long as they're utilizing roads that are twenty-five miles per hour or less.
But they can't cross Mayfield Road because that's a state route, so they have to, I mean, if you see that, is that when they, at that point, is, do they get a ticket, or?
Well, we certainly strive for public education first, but there is a clear safety concern with that until we get the enhanced crossings, you know, by GDOT, through GDOT, which we've had some early indications that we may get some obstacles there.
Okay, Joe?
So Chief, we can't be the first ones to consider something like this. Do we have any practical learnings from other cities, other municipalities that have implemented this specifically in the area? Because the first thing that jumps into my mind is the meeting of large, very heavy motorized vehicles that normally use the road versus small, light, less dense vehicles that we're now suggesting could be using the road. And the mixing of those two things doesn't sound like a good idea in my book.
Right, and that would be part of that PTV plan, is we would have to designate only certain roads to be utilized. What we've seen in some other jurisdictions are they're they're heavily concentrated in kind of downtown areas that are already twenty-five miles per hour, pretty dense traffic. There are also possibilities of designated PTV lanes. Again, all that would have to come through a very comprehensive traffic study to develop the PTV transportation plan. But I do have safety concerns.
Yeah. Peyton?
Yeah, so I think my the main concerns that I get from people in the community are, how do we connect Crab Apple? We got two sides of the road, and how do we connect people who want to take their kids to school because they can't cross Birmingham? So those are really the main concerns that I kind of get, and I don't think this will get resolved today, but I think as we go move forward with our transportation plans and stuff, I think it's important that we try to implement that, because I see golf carts every morning in Crab Apple when the when it when it warms up and they park their car either at the Baptist church, or they just cross the street and, you know, just ignore it.
The Crab Apple plan itself was the subject that we discussed, that Robert discussed at the last meeting. We're going to do that that Crab Apple streetscape plan. That a big part of that is going to be how we're going to eliminate what we call the river between the two sides. Ultimately, we want to eliminate the river, also north and south, but that's going to be part of that planning process, and if if we're successful, which I believe we will be, the north-south should no longer be an issue when we're done with that plan. We'll still have the east the east-west issue with Birmingham Highway major, mostly. It's ultimately, this is whether or not you want to include special regulations regarding these.
they can be placed, control which streets, identify lanes perhaps. We can't change any of the requirements of the state law. I think Mr. Gerard may be able to chime in on the, we can't lower it to 15 years old or anything like that. We can't do anything that's already in state law. Can't go more restrictive.
So, state law supersedes anything we want to do?
It sets the... State law sets the baseline. We can make it a little tighter regulatory, but we can't make it less.
How about in our future trail system? You know, use on our trail system? Would they be allowed typically as we're looking at now, or would that be something we'd have to address?
That would have to be part of the transportation plan if we wish to do that route.
It also must include a permitting process if we were to go that route.
So, I, my thoughts are that, I'm not sure at this point what the ordinance would get us doing that, because, you know, we seem to be doing okay on that front. But I think just with the way, and I'm not sure of the place-making plan, the timing of that, and how it relates to the 2021 transportation plan, but those two things seem, would be important, that those would be a consideration, the use of golf carts in the Crab Apple area. That's my thought.
I mean, you brought up a very valid point, and I think Michelle was about to talk about a little bit. If you wanted to see a more, a more robust plan for, to, for people to more utilize golf carts, if you wanted to see Crab Apple kind of turn into like a seaside-type thing, where everybody, if you've been out to seaside Florida, you know, you got all the golf carts moving around, they're moving around with the cars, they basically share the same space.
The police busy would be your...
You, and we could start constructing trails that instead of constructing them at eight foot, we can construct them at 10, or to make them wide enough so they could be multi-use trails, things along those lines. So, it would be, it's whether, we could, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief and Robert, we could work, you could abide by the current state regulations, stay on 25 mile an hour roads and don't cross state roads, which this is one. And I don't think we have to touch it. But if you want to make this part of our community, I think we might want to just plan that in a little bit more.
Now, I would say, you know, it sounds like this with state law and what we are allowed to, you know, what we have right now, the main issue, especially as we speak about Crab Apple, is just the state routes that bicycled each side, so... And I think, Chief, were you saying that's something that is being addressed, or there may be some hurdles with the state, or did Robert, somebody say that?
Yes, sir, there are hurdles with the state route, because we have to make an application. But right now, as Ms. Leaders mentioned, right now, they're holding to it as signalized intersection, because it does accommodate pedestrians and other modes of transportation. We can look at, we can make an application, but I know they've already made that statement, so we got to be real cautious how we approach that.
Carol?
I just want to put one thing on the record, so gators are exempted. Just for the record, I have a gator that's a working vehicle that I take in between our farm and one release, and I go on provenance a very short distance, very infrequently. Am I going to get pulled over?
Technically, you could, but...
So, we kind of drive over to the side, but it's the only way to get to the farms on provenance, very short, like a fifth of a mile.
They're not allowed on public streets.
Good answer, Chief.
Understood.
So, in Crab Apple, all the roads are 25 miles per hour currently now, right? So, in order to achieve our objective in Crab Apple, or at least hope is really the state, the state routes? And, because really, I'm trying to think of any neighborhood, I guess Waterside's the only one that's in Crab Apple that really couldn't get to downtown. Is that right?
That is correct.
And as you were saying, signalized intersections, it'd still be tough even if we were to get permission here at this one for people to get to without being on 25 mile an hour road. Steve?
Just talking to Ken real quick, I just have a question for the Chief and Robert. So, currently, as our 25 mile an hour roads exist today, can someone legally get in their golf cart and drive on our streets?
Absolutely, if they're a licensed driver.
We don't have to create our own regulations allowing that vehicle to be on our streets?
Not if we're going to follow state law, but if we do, that's when we have to have an ordinance and pragmatically the PTV transportation plan, which is very comprehensive, it's spelled out in state law what those requirements are. They require, one of the big components of that is traffic engineering would have to approve each street that would be utilized for golf carts. And they cannot be above what the state regulations are, so we couldn't say, we want 35 mile per hour, if that would not be possible.
So, absent the plan, as it sits today, people could be riding around their golf carts all back here and coming over to the stores and the restaurants and all that?
Absolutely, just cannot cross state routes to get to the other side.
Thank you.
So, with that, my question is, when you see that, are most of those golf carts compliant? Do they, do they, there was a list of, you know, have to have a rearview mirror, and so, most of them fall into that category?
Most of them are. Most of them, we've addressed a couple that didn't have headlights and that kind of thing in our traffic, especially one of our, our traffic specialist, especially that he is, I spoke with him about this at length, and he's had a few younger folks that were out and didn't have headlights, didn't have horns, they were more a golf cart for usage on an actual golf course, not street-worthy. And we did some public education on that. But most of the other ones I've seen around are very nice golf carts, which would be
compliant, just from a cursory look at them, they appear to be.
Being driven by licensed drivers? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
So, just to be clear upon exiting on this one, are we, as of right now, we're just going to continue with the state regs?
Yeah, I mean, as long, as long as in the future, we can build on trying to get the crossings, that's, I think that's fine. If we're going to try to do the crossings, we don't have to do anything.
I think state regs, kind of, you know, unless you want to be tighter, but I don't think I'm hearing anybody...
I'm not sure what that would accomplish, except for us having to do signage and, at least if I understood that. But I do think that there might be some merit to incorporating it, or considering it in the 2021 transportation plan, just because we have these islands of the community that might...
So, clarify what you're asking about, with the cross connections?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the state. I mean, I would see that as being important to at least address that, because that would make a big difference.
Yeah, just to reiterate then, as we proceed with the comprehensive transportation plan next year, we can incorporate in our, in the Deerfield and the Crab Apple areas consideration for multimotor.
Everybody good with that? All right.
Just to make sure what I just agreed to.
Sure.
We're not going to do anything, we're just going to allow the state, current state laws to govern.
Correct, and we're going to, in the new transportation, address the crossings on the state routes.
Okay.
All right. Okay. And again, I think the big unanswered, or the question, or the answer that is probably important to what a lot of us hear is the HOA, you know, rules where an HOA really has the authority to whether to allow the golf carts or not in their neighborhood. Okay. Tammy, would you please sound agenda item number two?
Agenda item number two is Discussion of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board: Recommendations on Facility Needs, Out-of-City Fee Reimbursement, and Future Programming. Jim Craig.
Hey, do we have any public...
No, we do not.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay. For the last several months, Parks and Recreation Board has been taking up these three topics. We started this back in, approximately in September, and they have put in a tremendous amount of time, not only in meetings, but offline in studying things, and I'll explain some of that as we go through this. And so, this is to give you an idea of what the Parks and Recreation Board has come up with over the last several months. Excuse me. So, looking at the programming needs, okay, and the question, the basic core question we're trying to solve is what programming should we provide now or in the immediate future? And what we did is we did an analysis of every single recreation and programming activity in Alpharetta, Don's Creek, Roswell, Forsyth, and Cherokee Counties. This produced nearly 60 pages of programming information, of which we went through it to analyze what did we want for Milton here? We also took the data from the statistically valid survey done in 2017. That, of course, expressed the wants and needs of the community. And we also had all of the data from the MOU, the agreement with Alpharetta. We had seven years of analysis of what people were signing up for. It took a lot to distill this information down into what we feel we should be providing. And so, from a programming needs perspective, the things that ranked the highest was the ability to provide youth softball, the ability to provide gymnastics, dance programming, full-day summer camps. Now, just to be clarified here, we do provide Camp Joyful Souls, a special needs camp, but we're talking camps for regular needs people. Surprisingly, indoor lacrosse and indoor baseball scored quite high. And then, year-round type classes, things that parents can do during the day when they have toddlers, you know, so the toddlers can be doing things. A very popular thing is to be able to do gymnastics or exercise programs while the toddlers have things that they can do. And so, that identified the programming needs that we're looking at. So, then, what then facility needs do we have? And again, we took a look at, you know, what, all the research we have, we spoke with all of our current program providers, tried to get them to create realistic projections of growth in their programs, and then tried to tie that to our desired programming that This led to a discussion, what are the facility needs to meet the programming requirements? First was that on diamond-shaped fields, we have an immediate need for four more diamond-shaped fields. Now, by the way, I would like to point out that these recommendations came out of the meetings in December. We did not meet in January, and so, as you will talk in just a moment, some things have changed a little bit. The basketball program, looking for access to four more gymnasiums, and we really need a gymnasium where we have unrestricted access. What does that mean? It means that right now, the gymnasiums that we have are not gymnasiums that we own, they are gymnasiums that we rent from five, excuse me, six Fulton County schools, as well as a church that we now are in a relationship with. And because we don't own them, we don't have the priority control over them. So, it's a, it is a, at times, a situation where you will have, we're given last-minute notice to cancel it well up, just today. Fulton County closed down their schools for the cleaning of the schools for coronavirus. While we did finish winter basketball two weeks ago, we're now in spring basketball. We're now going basketball just about 12 months a year, as the popularity of it. So, we were immediately, we put out the word that when the schools closed, we're not able to have basketball for the next two nights. The, as long as we're using others' schools' gymnasiums, it's a situation where we will always be secondary. So, that's what we're saying, is can we get some type of unrestricted access? The tennis courts, we heard loud from the tennis community, and it is clear that they do need the two more tennis courts that are spoken of, spoken to in the master plan for the former Milton Country Club. The need is there. We have one of the most packed four courts in comparison to tennis courts in other communities, highly utilized. And then, if you see, we also make a reference for additional rectangular lighted fields, preferably with artificial turf. Well, this is one I can look to the council and say, thank you. We do have Cox Road, most appreciative. The two grass fields, we took a bit of a beating these last two months with all the rain, but we're able to use the artificial turf field. Cox Road relieved an immediate pressure need on rectangular fields. So, that's a success, and we'd like to say, thank you. Thank you very much. So, we've talked about the programming that we think we should be offering, we've talked about the facility needs that need, that the Parks and Recreation Board recognized. That then took us to a question on the non-resident reimbursement. If you recall, one of the immediate needs we should look at is girls' softball. The Parks and Recreation Board took a very pragmatic view of the offerings we have now. We offer football, which is predominantly a boys' sport, and it has the complement of cheerleading, predominantly a girls' sport. We have tennis that is offered for both boys and girls, as well as adults. We offer lacrosse for boys and girls. We offer basketball for boys and girls. We offer baseball for boys, but we do not have the facilities to offer softball for girls. Down Cogburn Road in Alfreda North Park, there is a successful girls' youth softball program that's based out of there, and it was a unanimous vote of the Parks and Recreation Board that if the city were to move forward on the idea of reimbursement for out-of-city fees, this would be a program that would be targeted for out-of-city fee reimbursement. Also, we have heard from a small but vocal group of senior citizens who are engaged in activities in Alpharetta. These are Milton residents, and I'd like to take a minute and just clarify. At Alpharetta North Park, there is the Adult Activity Center. When the MOU was exited, Alpharetta went back to their previous policy, which is that senior citizens participating in programming at that facility are not charged out-of-city fees. So, we're not talking about Alfreda North Park. But Alpharetta has recently built, rebuilt the former Alfreda Library, which is now the Alfreda Arts Center at Mayfield and, not Cogburn.
It's Camp...
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. And we've heard from some seniors who participate in activities there, and they say, well, now that, you know, with this MOU now gone, you know, instead of $100 to do something, it's costing me $150. There was a sentiment by the Parks and Recreation Board that seniors who are participating in these type of programs, we should find a way to make them eligible for reimbursement for out-of-city fees until such time as we can get to the point that we can offer similar type of arts programming. Now, to give you an idea of what some of this arts programming is, sculpting, jewelry, plaster, painting, intro to bread, excuse me, bead weaving, quilting, beginning sewing, painting, freedom with acrylics, watercolors... painting, freedom with acrylics, watercolors, composing a photograph on the wheel. This is a ceramics firm, Wheel Throne Pottery, Christmas tree, angel glass workshops, things like this. These are the types of arts type of programming that our seniors are participating in. Now, if you look at the presentation, I've told you, senior program, I have no available data. With the girls' softball, we were able to look at the growth in the softball. Exactly as you mentioned, that it would, reimbursement, if you had 100% reimbursement, we would be looking at approximately $25,000. You may recall that in the budget for this year, there was a line item of $50,000 for a possible reimbursement program. The senior programming, I can't look any of you and I tell you I have a clue how much this will cost. I do not believe it to be a very large number. It's something we can certainly try and research in. I haven't pursued this with Alpharetta yet because I wanted to get the sentiment of this, of the council. But the feeling here is that the two groups that we need to try and do something with is the girls' softball and seniors in programming outside of the Adult Activity Center. So, if we were going to go do this, the ask that I have is if you want us to continue to pursue this as an idea, does this will then mean an investment in time and money as we have to find a way to create this process and make it legal in accordance with any ordinances and rules that we'd have to have in the city? So, that's the summation of the work that your Parks and Rec Board has done for the last six months. I'm pretty proud of their work. They have put in an enormous amount of time.
I have a couple of questions. One, just going back to tennis, and I'd say we need, and I know in the past, we have done some partnerships with Fulton County Port of Education, some of the school facilities. I think Northwest, Northwest Middle School has some tennis courts. Is that, would that be something to look into, to do some kind of MOU with them to help with tennis?
Certainly, they are rentable when they're available. One of the challenges with the tennis courts at both Hopewell Middle, as well as the Northwestern Middle, is that, well, Cambridge High School has tennis courts, they are also using Hopewell Middle. Milton does not, High School does not have tennis courts, so they're also using, and they do not have lights.
Okay.
And there's no accessible bathrooms.
Okay. That makes sense. Yeah, definitely a handicap there. Okay. And also, I know, I recognize Scott here tonight, so thank you for all your feedback. I don't know if you have anything you want to add or, okay. I'll just start. You know, obviously, this is very important, our Parks and Recreation Program. It's important to us, as well as our citizens. I like the idea of maybe compensating for the senior, although I know, like you said, you don't know to what grass. It probably wouldn't be a whole lot. I think that's a nice thing to do, and I certainly respect the, because of recommend on the softball. My only question to that is, you know, I know we have several other programs that, you know, back unfortunately with the MOU, that we don't have an MOU now, but unfortunately, it made a lot more sense for our Milton citizens to not, in the big picture. How do we address, you know, it seems like we, we got feedback from several, several other type programs too, other than just, you know, softball or whatever. And so, to me, that would be the only challenge. How do you pick, you know, we're going to offset, we're going to compensate on this one, but we're not on another one? So, it's just a thought.
If I may, that was quite the discussion item. And one of the first ones that was pointed out is that gymnastics is, it's a fantastic sport for young ladies. There are young men who participate in, but it's predominantly a female-driven sport. And there was the clear and obvious, we're not taking care of girls playing the stick in the ball sport as are boys. So, that one was, was pretty quick to decide. However, when we took a look at the volume of participation in the gymnastics, we realized we would very quickly exceed the budgeted amount. So, the sentiment of the Parks and Rec Board was if we are going to start with some type of reimbursement, start small, start with the obvious being the, the obvious to the Parks and Rec Board being the girls' softball and seniors, and see how it goes. And then we'll see what the actual rate is of people coming in and seeking reimbursement. If you start trying to promise and cover everyone, it becomes very hard to take it away, as we saw with the MOU. So, the message of the Parks and Rec Board was pick this as a starting point, and then continue to assess and reassess as you go by.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. I think there was some criteria used as well. I think one of the things that, that you and the board looked at were what, if we were, if we were, if our program was fully developed, what programs would we likely offer? Would, what, what would we want to be offering? And that helped, if I am correct, helped us figure out, okay, this is, we should be reimbursing for those, for those programs that we just can't currently offer, but aspire to do so. Did that help inform your?
It did, and it also, what helped inform was looking at, in the MOU data, the actual different numbers of families that were participating. So, you have some programs that were used very heavily repeatedly by a small group of families, but it resulted in many, many registrations. Whereas things like the softball program, you're serving a larger group of families.
I think that's an incredibly important point, because if you look at the amount of money spent per program, it doesn't necessarily reflect the number of community members served by that program. And that would be a reason why you might be doing something like girls' softball and not necessarily something like gymnastics.
Okay. Joe, I think you had a question, then Carol?
Yeah, so, Jim, if we had extra diamond fields, could we offer girls' softball as a program?
Well, the, the answer is we could, based on how we're configuring them. One of the analysis points that came out, it was very clear, is when you look at the number of participants in a program and the number of touches on a field or a court, okay? Right now, lacrosse, as an example, boys' and girls' lacrosse, they practice twice a week and then have a game on the weekend, usually Saturday, sometimes Sunday.
Get the capacity issues and the challenges that we have there.
That's three touches, whereas baseball right now has over 800 kids. They get one practice a week and then one game, so it's two touches. Four diamond fields right now would help catch up on baseball to provide equal, to then go into girls' softball would require additional diamond fields. A softball field is different from a baseball field in two specific ways.
Well, what I want to be careful about is it seems like we're prioritizing baseball over softball. Because if we add the facilities and we're just, we just don't have room on the facilities, it's because we're already scheduling something else there, okay? Now, that's not really my point. My point is, the only way to offer some of these programs is to invest in facilities. And every time I think about this issue, I always come back to this idea that we are never going to get away from a reimbursement program if we don't invest in getting the programs and the facilities that we think are necessary, offered by the city itself, okay? So, I just don't, I, I know it's difficult, and let's face it, when we pulled out of the MOU, that was really, really difficult. I still hear from people about this.
I do, too.
Yeah, I know you did. But, but the reality is that our money is best spent investing in everyone, not just investing in a few people. And when we have a reimbursement program, what we're really saying is we're going to take money from every single person in the city, and we're giving it to one citizen so that they can play softball, or they can do pottery, or they can do whatever it is. And I'm not, I like all those things. I think those things are important. It's not like they're unavailable. It's just that they're not available at the right price, okay? So, to me, that's a big difference. And I'm, I'm opening to hearing what you guys have to say about all this. I just worry that it's not going to be something that I can understand my way to support. Go ahead.
Well, again, you will have to create this $50,000.
No, I, yeah, I get it.
So, this was a discussion of if we were to do this, what would we do?
Right.
Knowing you would have to be a limited response.
Jim, I, I think it goes back, if I may jump in, it, it goes back to the criteria that when I sat down with, with Jim and, and the board to discuss how to go forward, because we're, we're still a growing city, and we, there are programs that we just don't have the facilities to be able to offer currently, but things that you would traditionally see offered by a city. And Scott, I, I would love for you to jump in at some point as the, as the chair, not to throw you into the hot seat, but they use that, that criteria to determine where should we be reimbursing. We're not reimbursing based on, "We like you better than you." I think it was more along the lines of, let's take girls' softball as an example. Do we even have enough girls in the program to be able to support our own softball program? Or should that be one of the programs that we maybe not, maybe long-term look at Alpharetta and say, "Hey, let's, how do we co-host this type of program? Let you use our fields, we'll use your fields." I think there's just a little bit more to this than is, might, might be getting conveyed here.
I get it. And I'm just, you know, one voice, and I talk to Scott about this on a regular basis, and I, I still haven't reconciled the challenges that I have here, but, and I'm, off the top of my head, I don't think I was somebody who thought that moving down this road was a good idea, but I'm, hey, like I said, I'm one voice, I'm willing to listen, and I'm willing to vote on whatever we need to vote on.
And it was always intended to be temporary. This is not something that we would, we would seek to just continue doing. If, if we're paying, if we're spending money on, on covering that out-of-city fee, that should be a clear signal to us that we need to create this program. So, event, if, if we were with any program for any length, length period of time, then we probably, we're not investing our money probably correctly. Eventually, this should be phased out, because we should have created the programs that, that we should create for the people of the city.
How much money do we spend on Parks and Rec on an annual basis? And how much money do we cash?
I don't know off the top of my.
Based on overall budget.
My, my MNO fund this year was $1.1 million. That doesn't count the capital.
So, that, yeah, the numbers weren't really the important part. The important part was, we make decisions on what to do with that money every single year. And again, this gets back to my whole thing. What we offer is our choice. If we're not making the right choices, let's, let's alter the choices that we make.
Agreed.
If we want to add, you know, something else, let's figure out how to fit it in the budget.
And, and those should all be, I agree, and those should all be data-driven, as I think, as I think they were. Right now, we, we do lack some facilities, as it's explained to me, and I apologize, I don't know the difference between a baseball field and a softball field, but apparently they're very different. So, we just.
Yeah, I don't know either.
We just don't have the facility for it. But we are actively looking for more diamonds to be able to expand the programs. And if it made sense, if, if Alpharetta and Milton could support a girls' softball team individually, then it would make sense for us to, to create that.
Yeah.
You know, I would just say, and I got a couple other folks that want to speak or have comments or questions, and I thought the same, the same thing. My concern is, you know, we, we did not renew the MOU because in the best interest of long-term, the city, everybody knows that. And we have to be careful that we're not slowly working our way back into, you know, 25 this year, 50 the next, or whatever. I do believe, though, we put the 50 in the budget to be available to discuss this, because 50 versus, say, 500, it was only, you know, 10% of what we were, were spending. But, you know, long-term, we have to be careful that we are, are building the facilities within Milton. But just to, Joe, you know, I had the same concern, but again, we did, that was the reason we put it in there. So, if there was a small amount that may help, that you guys think, I certainly could get behind that. So, I think Laura, you had something?
Yeah. So, do we have enough girls in the city to support our own softball, in, in city softball league? That's, that's the question that, that will determine how the, the out-of-city, you know, fee for me.
I am currently a coach at Alfreda Youth Softball. I recently stepped down, about a year ago, from being a member of the board. The program at their rec level has about 350 girls, ranging in age in the U, under six, under eight, under 10, under 12, and 13 and up divisions. Typically, that allows them to produce four to five, in some cases, six teams in an age group. The U8 is the biggest one right now. They have six teams. If it works well right now with the mix of, Alpharetta has an agreement with Johns Creek, the Johns Creek girls are coming in, they've got their own deal worked out, they're allowed to register. So, we have Johns Creek girls, we have Alpharetta, young ladies, we have Milton participants, and you have a handful of people from Roswell. So, as a community program, it's got the sufficient energy and growth and, and participants to make a healthy league. It is my opinion, after being coached there many, many seasons, that if we were to intentionally divide and conquer.
It won't work.
Both leagues would struggle.
Okay. That's a good.
But the working together is what makes it that particular program successful.
And is that why the Parks and Rec Board has probably prioritized the diamonds, the softball? That's why we're not seeing softball?
That was exactly the reason.
Okay. So, that makes sense. So, that's why they've come to the conclusion that they want to, the non-resident.
I'm sorry, I cut off.
The non-resident fee is to be supported, because it may make sense for that to be a long-term strategy.
If I can get softball field for $25,000, then I can be.
Then let's, let's skip that. Okay.
For a few years, it's not.
They're not touching.
Got to solve that problem.
Okay.
So, we've got to work around, we're going to be able to support softball.
Okay. So, I would support that long-term, if that's, if that's the workaround, because I keep seeing the baseball diamonds, but not girls' softball, and that makes sense to me. My other question, okay, sorry.
I had one point. Please be aware, North Park currently has eight softball fields. They are shared between adult and, men's and co-ed adult softball and the girls' softball program. At eight fields, they have excess capacity.
Okay.
On a regular basis, here we are, we're in spring, just this past Saturday, one doubleheader, by the way, but just this past Saturday, they used four fields. So, for the question of us building more softball fields, I would call that into question when, you know, literally down the street from us, there's excess capacity in softball fields.
Okay. Thank you. So, and then my other question relates to the, the senior fees.
Yes.
And so, it sounds like, so Alpharetta has graciously offered to not charge our seniors, Milton seniors, an out-of, out-of-city resident fee.
At the Adult Activity Center only.
And, okay. And, and so, do we have, is that a short-term grace?
That was their policy prior to the MOU, and they returned to that policy. In conversation I've had with Morgan, he's indicated to me that this is, this is the will of the council, as it is.
So, you don't think that'll change? That'll?
I do not anticipate that.
Okay.
That's a, that's a blanket policy for all seniors, not just Milton seniors, or Alpharetta seniors, or Johns Creek or Roswell. It's a blanket policy, from what I understand.
Okay. And so, that, that would just, for me, the, getting more additional information on those, the, the details on the seniors that are going to the library, yeah, and how much that would be, because as we've all said, once we do, once we subsidize something like that, we're, we're locked in, I think.
I mean, there could also be a first-come, first-served type thing here as well. You know, this year, it's a 50,000, we put $50,000 in the budget, hoping we don't get anywhere near that, actually. But we could just create a threshold, first-come, first-served, for those that, that come in and file for the reimbursement. That could prevent us from going over budget in any way. That could prevent us from going over budget in any way.
Peyton?
Um, Jim, a few questions. You mentioned the Johns Creek and the softball. Do they pay out-of-city fees?
To the best of my knowledge, no. There are a couple of sports with, between Alfreda and Johns Creek that both have very low attendance. And so they've simply said for these couple of sports, you can come to Johns Creek, and these couple of sports, you can come to Alfreda.
So does Alfreda charge Johns Creek out-of-city fees for their softballs?
To my knowledge, the answer is no.
Okay. So they're going to charge us. Correct?
They are.
Okay.
They're right next to them, so it's different.
And Johns Creek's right there too?
The other side.
Oh, it's across the highway.
Why does that matter?
I don't, I, I think we're being, I, I don't know why.
I understand your question, but why does proximity matter, whether we're close or we're?
I didn't say proximity mattered.
I was being sarcastic, sorry.
They about touched the border.
But I, I not know that, so that.
So Johns Creek doesn't pay, but we would?
But it's just on a couple of programs. What we had with the MOU is that we were getting access to everything.
And I think there's some consideration both ways on that program. Um, I don't know if they use Johns Creek's fields and things like that. There's, it's not just a one-way arrangement.
There is a park that is surrounded by Alfreda called OC Park. And it is Johns Creek native property. So a lot of people who live around there, they want to play in their neighborhood park.
Sure.
That, that's where the reciprocal was for them.
That probably, that does make more sense because the, you know, that, that's the whole reason for reimbursement, we don't have the facilities, but they, Johns Creek does have facilities they use, that could probably weigh in, make it a little more fair.
Thank you.
My next question is, on the arts program, what at the Adult Activity Center at, in North Park, do they not offer any of the, those same programs?
They have, uh, they have more activities-type things. There is a small arts area. Uh, there's a small arts building. The one in, on, uh, Canton and Mayfield is much larger. Uh, because I know they have a kiln there at the Adult Activity Center. But it's more, uh, activities, events. They have classes, they have canasta club, they have computer lessons, and they have trips, and they go on trips all the time. So it's, it's a different set of programming. This, that's overall adult enrichment. This is, at the arts area, it's focused strictly on arts.
Okay. I mean, I'll, I'll just, I mean, I'm kind of more, more aligned with, I understand the softball stuff now, but I think we provide with the Adult Activity Center in Alfreda, so I don't know why we would start branching off the arts and everything else. That's just my two cents.
Okay, anybody else?
So again, the question is, is this an idea of reimbursement? Is this something that you would like us to invest more time in and start to put together? Uh, and I know you can't vote on it, but we're just looking for some guidance.
I, I'll speak first. I, I, again, I, I do like the idea with, even though to Peyton's point about the senior, the other senior center, but if they're arts or something and, um, maybe offsetting those costs with the seniors there, ma, you know, to Steve's point, maybe we do a first come, first served, maybe we just have a dollar amount or something and then feel that out. Um, and again, also, um, you know, I struggle a little with the, uh, 25,000 on the, the softball, but I understand it and it's, I could probably get to where that might be smart money to, to be spent during the short, short term or whatever, but certainly let's hear what.
I would, I would say yes to softball and no on the arts.
Carol, any thoughts?
Without any data, I, it's nothing against a particular group, but just without data, it's hard to.
I, I cannot agree with you more. It's just such a new program, like a point. It's, it missed the MOU data collection, so we don't have it, but.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to reexamine, but I was just, let me go yes on the softball and upon data. I probably would be very agreeable, but until then.
And so, and, uh, so I like the idea of the reason we, um, are doing the out-of, uh, the non-resident fee for softball because I think that's money wisely spent. And then on the senior, yes, more information on how much it is. And those programs are nice, I mean, from what you read, but I, I think we need to be careful about what we're going to baseline provide. Um, and, and because we just got through that very painful providing, um, a lot of programs that are, are not a baseline program. So that's what I would like more information on.
Okay, Joe? Yeah, I, a couple of things. First, I think we have the best Parks and Rec director out of all the cities that are around. So I would rather give my money to Jim and have him figure out how to turn that into extra diamonds, extra fields, extra facilities, than give it to citizens because they think they're paying too much to participate in something. Okay? The second observation that I have is if we didn't have the benefit of having Alfreda next to us, or Roswell, or anyplace else, we wouldn't be having this discussion. The only reason we're having the discussion is somebody realizes I could go over here, potentially get to participate in a sport, and is there any way the city could help me pay for it? And that just doesn't make any sense to me. And so, yeah, I'm open to talking about this more.
So really, what I, what I'm hearing is probably the majority of council would be on board with, uh, entertaining further the, the softball reimbursement. Um, and then maybe some more data on the, uh, the seniors thing, and that's open for discussion at some point.
Mayor, can I throw one more consideration out there not to muddy the waters on this? Would there, would there be any appetite for us looking at seniors who currently qualify for the income-based senior homestead exemption that are in the program? So if you were, if you're involved in that program and you also have our senior homestead exemption based on income, um, consider it for those people.
Well, see, I, I'm sorry, but I think, I guess my question is, we already have that at that Alfreda Senior Center. I mean, they already have somewhere to go. But now it's like.
They have somewhere to go, but is it, is it a different program?
But we're talking like, what if someone wanted to do, uh, you know, paper mache? I mean, we're, we're really, I think we have an op, they, there's already, there's already a place for seniors to go instead of us starting to do the arts program. Well, how about senior sports? And how about little kids? You know, I mean, we're, I think we're just getting, what Laura said, we're getting, we're trying to get away from that stuff, is my point.
Completely.
And I, let me just add one thing, just because I went through this with my mother-in-law recently of, um, really nothing to do at the Milton Senior Center. Like, not really any activities and not anything to do. And I'm, I'm not being critical. I don't, I'm not in the business, so I don't understand how you staff it and what you do. So maybe rather than piecemeal in this, we have a presentation on our whole offering and who pays what and who can go where to do what because we're seeing one little sliver and, and I don't understand the rest of it. I'm just not getting great feedback over here. So it makes me want to slow down without data over here. I'm not building, I'm not putting up a wall. I'm just saying, more data, big picture approach.
You just do like I did. I told my mom she can play bingo over here in this room, but she can't go to the art room and draw anything.
Yeah.
Exactly. No, I mean, when you did the same thing with, you could say that about your kids, you let them do one thing or another. I, I think, and, and this is just my opinion, I, I certainly respect and understand that. I just think, my gut feels it's such a small group that maybe wants to do the art and all that. Maybe if you could just, a- and you don't have the data, data, and you may not know what it exactly, but maybe just give us the, your best educated guess next, you know, as you, and we'll make that decision.
I want to debate this for just a second.
Yeah, absolutely.
So gymnastics was something that was a top priority. And so you're saying we're not going to do gymnastics?
So gymnast, gymnastics was just the highest price tag. Um, it wasn't necessarily the highest priority, and that, so that was one aspect of it. The second aspect is are, are we ever as a municipality planning on providing gymnastics as a program? So that was the, that was the second test. And the answer to both is, is the third test?
It's offered privately.
Uh, it's offered privately, widely.
Numerous things. Uh, we are, we are, I, I think we're going back to where we were trying to get away from.
You're, it's an extremely valid point, and truthfully, I, the 50% that we actually paid out because we owed six months on the MOU, we got out at the right time, I assure you.
Yeah.
Um, the point is a very, very salient point. Um, we're just trying to identi, we would like to be able to offer these programs to our seniors, we just can't yet. That was kind of what we were trying, we're trying to bridge that gap, but I, it's a, I understand your point entirely.
What is offered at the Alfreda North Park Senior Center compared to that? I guess that would help.
To your point, we want seniors to have a great experience. We want them to have lots to do. Let's just understand the big picture.
And that goes down to more data on this. So again, I think where we're at, council's certainly open to looking at the, uh, the softball. And we'd just like some more information on the, uh, senior thing, and that may or may not, uh, fly.
As long as the council is receptive to the idea, I have no problem through myself and my staff doing the additional research coming up. I didn't want to go down a rabbit hole. That was just an absolute.
Not of interest. I want to get it.
Okay, everybody good with that?
Very good.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. And if you would please, reach out to your Parks and Rec board member, let them know that they, they're doing great work. Thank you.
Thanks. Hey Scott, thanks for being here too. All your work. All right, um, Tammy, if you, uh, please call the next item.
Yes, Agenda Item Number Three, which is Discussion of Milton Tree Canopy Conservation Plan, Parag Agarwal.
And I'm going to assume we don't have any, uh,
We do not. No public comment. No, Mayor.
Hi, Parag Agarwal, City's Community Development Director. I also have with me our city arboretist Sandra Doitt. She is serving as the project manager of this city's tree preservation ordinance update project. Today we are here to give you an update on the finalizing of those tree preservation ordinance. As you know, we had a very good joint meeting with the city council and the planning commission members two months back in January. And I'm very proud to say in that meeting, we were able to resolve, I think, almost all the issues. In the last 45 days, we have been meeting internally many times, just to finalize the document, just to make sure all the grammar and everything is right. Uh, but in the last one month, a few other issues were brought to our attention. So we just want to bring those issues in front of the city council, just to get your feedback. So the goal of today's meeting is not to again look at the entire preservation ordinance, but to focus only on these three or four issues. Uh, one is the protected tree size, large lot incentives, application fees, and the rural view shed. Before I give this to Sandra, so the next steps will be, if the city council is comfortable with these discussion items, we will be, uh, discussing this with the city's attorney's office. The city attorney has already reviewed this document once, but we will be again be submitting, uh, this document to the city attorney's office for their final review. Hopefully that will take two, uh, two weeks. So if everything goes well, we are planning to have this again in front of the city council in the month of April for the final adoption. So again, we do have few slides today, uh, but I will give it to Sandra for brief introduction.
Okay, so our first item for discussion is the protected tree size. I just wanted to give everybody a quick definition of what a protected tree is. In the current revised ordinance, it's any tree eight inches DBH or greater, any tree conserved or planted to meet the tree ordinance requirements. Any city tree, specimen tree, and/or any heritage tree. So basically, when you have a protected tree, the requirements are that you need to get a tree removal permit for the removal or disturbance to the root zone. So under the density ordinance, which was the original tree ordinance, the protected tree size started at 15 inches diameter at breast height or greater on all property. With the new canopy ordinance that came online in 2018, protected trees were two inches diameter at breast height or greater on undeveloped properties, which is basically when anything was associated with development activity or permit going on the site. You had the, the protected tree size started at two inches. For developed sites, or basically anything that didn't involve a development permit, the protected tree size started at six inches DBH. A revision to this tree ordinance, we came up with eight inches diameter at breast height or greater on all property. So a quick overview of how we got to the eight inches. So basically, when we went back to the tree stakeholder committee and talked about the protected tree size, one of the things that came up was that we had different sizes for non-development and development. And some of the stakeholders did not like that it was treating each property differently. So they wanted to kind of have some consistency and have one size for all properties. So somebody pointed out that specimen trees start at eight inches DBH for small height class. So it was suggested that we start protected trees at eight inches diameter at breast height. So in a quick comparison with some of the cities around us, in Alfreda, basically any live tree, any size, requires a permit. They don't really have a definition for protected trees, but if you go by the criteria that a protected tree is required, it's basically any live tree. They don't have a minimum size requirement. Any live tree, you got to get a permit. In Roswell, they kind of have it separated into lots less than an acre and lots greater than an acre. So if you're in Roswell and you're on a lot less than an acre, you only are required to get a permit for specimen trees. And their specimen trees start at eight inches for under story, 16 inches for mid-story, 20 inches for over story, and 30 inches for pine. So you only need a permit on lots less than an acre, you're removing a specimen tree. Again, they don't have a definition of protected tree, so I just started with what the requirements are for a permit. On lots greater than an acre, you need a tree removal permit for any tree three inches in diameter at breast height or greater. Um, Sandy Springs actually does have a definition for protected trees, and their protected trees are 18 inches diameter or greater. So, and to give you an idea.
Can I make one statement too, Sandra, just to certainly get your, your feedback and stuff as, as well as council? And it was great to, to, uh, compare to our sister cities. Like, and, and not picking on Alfreda for any example, but, you know, I see any tree, any size. But the reality is, if you look at, probably if you Google it, Alfreda, there's not that many trees left because it's mostly developed. And I'm not saying that in a bad way, or Johns Creek, or whatever. So I guess we have to realize Milton's a little different too because we've got so much more open space and, and more trees, but.
Right. And I think once upon a time, they did have a minimum tree size criteria and for whatever reason, they got rid of it.
No trees left. No trees left. I'm kidding.
Um, so to give you an idea of what these sizes are, I had my lovely tree model go out with me and, um, we found an example of a six-inch tree. And an example of a 15-inch tree. So remember the six-inch tree is kind of where the canopy ordinance started at with protected trees. Um, 15 inches where the diam, um, the density ordinance started at. So as you can see, a 15-inch tree is just big enough to hug. And I lost my model, but I went out and found an eight-inch tree. And so these are kind of the trees that are behind us in the subdivision behind us. So these are some of the street trees just behind us. That gives you an example of what an eight-inch tree looks like. Um, an eight-inch tree is going to be, can't quite put both your hands around it. And you can see the canopy is kind of developing at eight inches. So at this point, we kind of wanted to have a discussion and get your recommendation of what protected tree size should be.
Joe? You're smiling. I'm gonna let you go first.
No, somebody else needs to go first. Well, I don't want to muddy it up because I kind of like Roswell's because I do think our larger lots, I think it's different if you take out a 12-inch tree on a three-acre lot compared to someone who lives in white columns or something. I think it affects people differently. But I'm scared to go down that road because this ordinance is pretty much already done, so, I, I, you know, I don't want to. But I, I do want to say this is more restrictive on our property owners going from 15-inch to eight. I don't know what the magic number is, but that's just my first thoughts on, just on that.
Sandra, just to, Roswell's is the opposite though, right? It's more restrictive on, on the larger lots than on the smaller lots.
Right, on the larger lots. Right. On the larger lots, do you want me to go back?
Yeah.
That must be for developing purposes.
It was, it hit us also when we, when we did the review. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. They're actually more restrictive on the larger lots.
I think it went too hard.
Which, we wanted to be the opposite.
I think you'd want to, I think you would want to be the opposite.
Basically for homeowners, existing properties that's not associated with development is kind of what we were looking at. So if you're less than an acre, you only have to get a permit for specimen sized trees. If you're greater than an acre, you have to get a permit for anything three inch.
Really?
So, so that's, that's where the last thing I would want to do, and, and I know we want to have one diameter, but, you know, people that have farms and that have livestock, you know, they need some flexibility on that diameter, because, you know, things, you know, I'd hate to not have incentives to have larger parcels.
And we're gonna get into that. I think that's the third one. Yes, the large lots.
So we really are trying to find, have one, one diameter for, for everyone. Is that, is that the goal?
From an enforceable standpoint?
So it would, the definition of a protected tree currently is just, a protected tree is the same size anywhere it exists. There, there is some discussion about how to handle the large lot canopy issue itself, and we get into that a little bit, but much more likely, the best way to manage the, the canopy requirements on a large lot is through zoning, not through the, the tree ordinance. We're looking, we have options here to, to gap that, or bridge that gap, I should say, when, until we get the, the equestrian zoning, for lack of a better title on that right now. But we do get into how to handle the larger lots. You could create different DBH trees, different, for, for a protected size on different sized lots. It just becomes a little bit more complex.
So just my, my observations are that, that the people that call me that are upset about tree removal, and kind of regardless of the diameter size, are mostly in neighborhoods with HOAs. You know, I don't, I don't hear from anyone that is next to a farm that, you know, hears chainsaws. They, you know, because I think they appreciate just the open space. So when it comes to deciding on that diameter, and I looked at those eight inch trees, that was, that was what we came to? Is that right?
That's the current revision to the canopy ordinance.
So those require a permit, and then also recompense?
Well, the recompense comes into play when you get into your canopy coverage requirement. So if the removal of protected trees causes you to go below your canopy coverage requirement, then yes, recompense is required.
So currently, if you remove, on a, on a, on a, an occupied property where, where a home exists, if you remove that, that eight inch tree, and it brings your canopy coverage on a one acre lot below 57%, you're gonna have to plant another tree, or, or somehow recompense for the tree. If you're on that same lot, and you're 80, and you bring it down to 70 by removal of a tree, you're not gonna have to do anything.
And, and I think that's important in, on a one acre lot. I just am not sure that on a, on a 10 acre parcel, that's, I'm, I'm just, I'm having a hard time with that, because I don't want to.
So I think we're gonna get into that. That's part of the presentation, once we get into something, into what we've been identifying as three acre plus or larger lots. That's part of the presentation. Maybe, do you, maybe you want to hit that first?
Okay.
So, before we move on, is there a reason there wasn't, I mean, we took a step from 15 to eight, not 15 to 12?
Took a step from 15 to six, and then we.
No, no, I know. It's, it's drastic.
Reality was in 15 to two on undeveloped properties.
Yeah, in some cases, it went from 15 to two.
Okay.
So eight kind of felt like a good middle ground.
Is there any more discussion on, on that, eight versus going from the 15 to two, or back to eight?
Well, we can just finish going through everything, and then discuss it all at once. Does that sound like?
That might, that might work better.
Since we're kind of overlapping into the large lots.
Okay.
Okay, so the next discussion thing was large lots, which is kind of what you were starting to get into. So currently, the way we have the revisions in the canopy ordinance is that residential lots, three or more acres are required to maintain tree canopy coverage currently existing, or the minimum amount set forth in Table 1, which is typically going to be your 57%, whichever is less. So an example of that would be if you own a four acre lot, and let's say your property is currently at 40%, you just have to maintain that 40%. You don't have to bring it up to the 57%. You just maintain that 40%. Any tree you remove, you're basically just replacing tree for tree. On residential lots, less than three acres, with an existing canopy less than 57%, must maintain the existing canopy or 25%, whichever is greater. So if you started out at 10%, you're gonna have to plant up to that 25%. Yeah. So this was kind of incentive for, so on a lot that's three acres or more, if you started at 0%, that means you maintain 0%.
Okay, that's, that's.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll just keep going on, and then we can have the discussion at the end. So the next thing on our discussion list was tree removal permit application fees. And so remember, these fees are for just a homeowner applying for a tree removal permit application, and nothing else. This is not associated with development permit, a pool permit, anything like that. It's just a homeowner wanting to move trees on their lot. So this is new to the tree ordinance. It was not in the original density ordinance. There was no tree removal permit application fee. The cost in the canopy ordinance is $25 per tree, with a maximum of $150. Keep in mind that dead, dying, or hazardous trees do not have to pay the fee. This year, for 2019, we have currently collected $19,100 into the, on with the tree application fees. Another quick comparison is in Alpharetta, there is no tree removal permit application fee. City of Roswell has a $50 flat fee for no matter how many trees you remove, or how big your site is, it's $50. Sandy Springs has no tree removal permit application fees. So, do you have a question, or?
No, just talk among ourselves.
She wanted to know if developers pay that. I go, no, you pay that.
Yeah, this is for, this is for properties where there is no development occurring. It's just tree removal.
If you want to cut down a tree, you have to fill out some paperwork, pay the money.
Yeah, but how many people know that? That just surprises me.
Everybody knows.
They do.
Well, everybody who applies for a tree removal permit.
Well, typically, no, I'll say that, because typically, people usually use a tree service.
Yeah.
You know, for example, I had a, I called a guy.
No, they can't, no, they.
No, what I'm saying is, and my tenants are saying, City Milton's been out here. I mean, they just know the process. The, the tree company.
Yeah, so, and I will tell you this, I don't get complaints about the tree removal permit application fee.
Yeah, it's not a sticking point. I just, that surprised me. I didn't know.
Most people just go, oh, okay. And they balk at it, but it's not a big investment, right? So the next item we have for discussion is the rural view shed. This is something that kind of came to our attention internally, as we did staff reviews to kind of get ready for the final draft of the revised ordinance. There's current language in there that says for minor subdivisions and individual undeveloped residential properties, the conservation of trees in a rural view shed shall be eligible for a bonus of 20% additional square feet of tree canopy coverage. So what kind of brought this to our attention and stuck out was that for minor subdivisions and individual undeveloped residential properties, there is no rural view shed requirement. So we wanted to recommend changing that language, and instead of saying in a rural view shed, just say within the first 60 feet of road frontage from an exterior street. Basically, give the definition of rural view shed.
And it also, the reason we want to see that, that 20% is now actually going to get people to plant in that, in that area, as opposed to elsewhere on their property. So we want to make sure we incentivize that.
Right. I think, because I think most people are, you know, if they can't see, I mean, if you screen that, then, you know, what happens beyond there is not seen, so.
Right. So we're trying to incentivize people to plant in an area where they're not necessarily required to.
Yes. That's a good one.
Okay. So then, unfortunately, right after that, we saw this line that said, "Individual conserved trees or planted trees within a rural view shed shall not be given tree canopy coverage credit individually or separately." So we thought that's kind of a contradiction, and our recommendation would be to delete this section, because we want to encourage people to plant in a rural view shed.
If I had to guess, just, just in, in complete transparency, my guess is when the original tree committee was looking at this, they wanted to kind of have their cake and eat it too. You were already required to have in, in the, in the larger subdivisions, you were already required to have a, the, the rural view shed. Therefore, you couldn't touch it anyway, so it wasn't included in that, in that figure, which would end up in more trees planted. That's my best educated guess, is that why, I don't think that was a Scrivener's error. I think there was intent behind it. It just doesn't seem to make sense to penalize in that manner.
That's a good catch.
Okay. So, I mean, before we go into the discussions of the tree sizes and large lots, would y'all say we could go ahead with these recommended changes to the rural view shed verbiage?
He goes, yeah.
Seems reasonable.
Okay.
Okay.
Should have started with those two.
Y'all want to go back to the pictures of the tree sizes? Okay, so this is our example of the eight inch tree. You can kind of see with the house in the background, the perspective of size. And then here's a six inch tree, which is basically almost the size of a tree you could plant, or.
Six inch, yeah.
Yeah. Or at least two years after being in the ground, maybe. And a 15 inch tree is a little bit more established. Well, it's gonna vary on the species and the location, all that stuff. I mean, these are urban trees, so they do have it a little bit harder. It takes them a little while to get established and to start really putting on some significant growth. So a 15 inch tree, I mean, it could take about 20 to 30 years, depending. A six inch tree, I mean, like I said, you could almost buy that at the nursery. And an eight inch tree is like a six inch tree that's been in the ground for about five years, depending. And like I said, it's all varied on what species you get. Some species are gonna take off faster, and it depends on where you put them. Street trees, it just takes them a little while longer to get established.
So do we have any idea, I mean, obviously, if the diameter of the tree was, you know, one inch, we'd have 99% of all the trees in Milton covered, right? You couldn't do anything to a tree without permission.
Right.
So, but at eight inches, what percentage of trees in, do we have any clue about that? Okay.
Make it easy.
It'd be canopy study, but not an individual tree survey. No, I would have no idea.
Good thinking.
Yeah. That would take a lot.
That's the mathematician in me coming out. I was gonna say, well, we just ought to pick the one that, you know, captures 65% of the canopy.
Yeah, no, I couldn't really even guess at that at this time.
Oh, we can guess. Wasn't I being good? Is the question, so.
Not with any accuracy.
So, a six inch tree is not available for, you know, you can't just plant a six inch tree.
Well, you can plant a six inch caliper tree. So the difference between caliper and DBH, so caliper is the measurement you use in the nursery, that's for nursery stock, and you basically measure six inches off the ground. Diameter at breast height is what you use to measure an established tree, a tree that's already planted, and that is measured at breast height, which is four and a half feet from the ground. So you're looking at measuring, so a six inch tree that you're measuring at, is a little different than a six inch tree. So a six inch tree that you measure at the base is probably gonna be more like a four inch tree at DBH. But, I mean, you can get big trees in nurseries. You can get like eight inch caliper trees that would be close to a six inch. They cost a little more, take a little longer to get established, but it is something that technically, yes, you could buy and plant.
Are we, what are we doing?
I, I mean, I have a stronger opinion on the larger lots, but I still think this is probably too restrictive on some of our property owners, but.
So Sandra, just, you know, you probably can't answer this. When you get called out to a neighborhood, is that a fair statement, that that's the majority of where you, when folks cut down trees, is that where you get some complaints or interest in the?
I mean, I would say it's probably both, but probably more so in a neighborhood, just because they're right on top of each other.
Top of each other. So.
Notice their neighbors a little more.
Yeah. And, and so are those trees, I mean, are they, you know, 15 inches, or they, when they call in a tree service, do, are they, is it?
Yeah, usually, eight inch tree is about the size, probably where it starts getting beyond homeowner.
Yes, like someone going out with their chainsaw.
Unless there's somebody that's skilled, or has, I mean, there are some people that could do it, but.
Okay.
I guess it would depend on the neighborhood. But yeah, I mean, you're just starting to get to the size where it's almost too much for a homeowner to do by themselves, but some can, some can't. I would say definitely a 15 inch tree is something that a homeowner would not be able to do on their own.
Where are we in this evaluation?
Picking the size of trees.
Well, are we happy with the eight inch tree size, or is there a recommendation on a different one?
I'm saving my ammo for the large lots. I mean.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I, I'll change the ordinance, and all the tree companies will still be enforcing the old one, okay? So I think eight makes some sense. I worry about getting it too small, but just because, although, actually, I don't worry about it, because I think everybody's very, they anticipate the fact that they're gonna have to call the City of Milton if they want to remove a tree. We just, we've achieved that level of awareness, I think.
And, I mean, I will say, this did go through, you know, all the tree meetings galore, and they, they came down to that, and so we'll see how it goes, I guess.
You know, I'll say this, and I've said this before, you know, when you look at it globally, and from the majority of our citizens, everybody loves trees and doesn't want to see any cut down. And you're right, you know, whether it's development, or neighbors, or whatever. But then you flipped it. Everybody individually, they want to cut a tree down in their yard, if it's their yard, and they don't want to have, you know, they complain both ways. So, you know, we get it both ways. So it's, it's a tough balance, so.
That is true.
Same person that, you know, will stand up here in City Hall against, you know, anything where trees are getting cut down, but they're gonna be the same ones that are frustrated and mad at the city when they go to get a permit to cut, or have to cut a tree down there. All right, so.
Am I hearing that eight is great?
Yeah, where are you guys on the eight?
Think she had that loaded.
Laura, Carol, you're not okay with the eight?
No, I have some comments. I'm just trying to see where we are.
Yeah, okay. I've got one that's okay with the eight. Do you have some comments, Carol?
Now? No.
Oh, okay.
I just.
All right.
Okay, so we'll get into it then. All right, so how about the, the large lots?
I think they should be all the same. So I don't think we should say, if you hit the jackpot and you don't have, if you have 5% coverage, I don't think, they should be 5%, and the person that has 60% has to go down to 57. I think we need to incentivize these larger lots as best as we can, and I think this is one of those tools to where we can say, hey, if you want to build a three acre lot, we want to give you some incentives to do that. Now, I don't know what the magic number is. I don't know what the percentage canopy needs to be, but it needs to be a lot less than what. to be, but it needs to be a lot less than what we're doing with the one-acre lots.
So that, just before you answer that, I just want to build on that, can we do an individual consultation, and can we have some discretion within the city of Milton and the staff to deal, to come up with a plan for larger lots that may have some exemptions, et cetera? Because I don't, that's what we want, I don't think we want just a hard and fast situation.
And that's what we're doing here.
Right, so currently, the requirement for AG1 lots, which is where your three-acre lots are going to be, is 57%. Now, looking at incentivizing large lots, and so I think a lot of that belongs in zoning, and that's something that's being looked at with the equestrian zoning that they're working on right now, you have Michelle and other staff working on looking at the equestrian zoning, which is going to kind of deal with horses and three-acre lots or more, so, in those areas, and then we also- So we've also been working with legal on the agricultural exemption, so that's something, if somebody is using it as agricultural, that will give them some relief as well, so, it's not like it doesn't exist, and, I mean, I just don't think the focus of the tree ordinance should be large lot incentives, the focus of the tree ordinance is going to be trees and maintaining our goal and objective of no net loss of trees, so I think that should be how.
Tony was saying, we are offering incentives for large lots in the tree preservation ordinance also.
Only if you have a canopy that is less-
That is already less.
That's, yeah, so, I mean, so I don't, sorry, I would disagree with that.
Yeah, I got to take exception to what you just said.
And just to support what Sandra's saying, she's not saying that you shouldn't have those incentives, she's stating that it shouldn't appear in the tree ordinance, it should, it should be with it somewhere preferably within zoning.
So what would the preference be right now? Because that's what's being proposed, is an incentive, so why can't we incentivize more?
So, so, this would be, if we're going to do that, it should appear in this, because we haven't finished our equestrian zoning, and I'm calling, again, equestrian zoning's going to be larger than just equestrian zoning, it's going to be more agricultural zoning. And in that zoning, where, which, let's say it's three-plus acres, or five-plus acres, or whatever is created from that, it's an incentive, that's where you would generally have those incentives or restrictions, as opposed to when the tree ordinance, because the tree ordinance's objective is to maintain a tree canopy. That being said, I just wanted to explain the comment that Sandra had just made, she's not, she's not against offering incentives for, for the larger lot development, it's about where it actually belongs. Stopgap measure is to include something in this, long-term, it should probably really be placed within our zoning code. You had mentioned, Councilmember Cookley, a little earlier about looking at that, looking at these larger lots on an individual basis. I just whispered to Ken, you know, is there a way for us to accomplish that, because I don't know how we defend our decision, if there isn't some sort of threshold, and Ken, if-
No, I mean, it's just, whenever, whenever government's doing policy, it's hard to make individual property-based determinations, policy tends to be a little bit more broad-brush than that, and so how would we make our distinctions? Is it impossible? No. Is it, is it very challenging to write a code like that? Can be, so we just need to be mindful of that if we're going to think about making sort of individualized lot determinations.
Laura?
So, so, I feel better if we're going to look at ag exemptions and giving some flexibility there, because the last thing I want is to run people out of Milton because they can't, you know, cut a tree down to maintain a pasture for their horses, so, and so then my next question is how, I just don't want to get, for people to get caught in, you know, the tree ordinance, and this is coming, and we have, you know, a situation where they're having to abide by the tree ordinance because we haven't done the equestrian zoning, or however, you know.
Let me, if you don't mind-
No, no, please.
Let me address that real quick, though, because Parag and I have been going back and forth on this. So, big broad-brush thing, state law does in fact, it's pretty protective of agricultural, it just is, you know, the southern prong of the General Assembly has always been very powerful, and always been able to get a lot of protections for agricultural uses, and that even permeates into state law, and basically what it says is, is that local government doesn't get to put into a practice, a ordinance that, that looks, or feels, or is designed to be, basically, number one, animal husbandry, or two, crop management. And so, you know, you have a professional staff here, and it's one of those things where if someone comes in and says, look, I am attempting to manage my crops, manage my fields, then they're probably not going to be subject to this anyway. On the other hand, the converse of that is, is that sometimes in Milton, we are uniquely susceptible to somebody doing anything on their property, and they say it's agricultural, and it's not, it's land disturbance is what it is, and everybody else in every other area of the metro has to pull a permit to do it. So, we're trying to figure out the right balance there, but I will say this, bona fide agricultural crop management, animal husbandry, you're covered. But on the other hand, if it's just bona fide land disturbance development, they're going to have to follow our rules, so.
Carol?
Okay, so, one last comment on this, and I think a lot of things you're doing are on the right track, and I might not know enough yet, but when we talk about this as maintaining tree coverage, maintaining is basically a negative pursuit. And I would love for our efforts to also be geared, that if we could know how much more tree coverage we need that's optimum, let's say in 20 years, and what the typical loss is per year, we really need to be on a massive planting program, because that needs to go hand in hand, and I don't know that it's really about maintaining, but it's about encouraging, quote, "growing" tree coverage, because this does center on the negative, and we really need a program that's on the proactive, so I would really like to put that in your court, that how are we going to get the city of Milton to undertake that process, to plant? Because it is a 10, 20, 30-year proposition.
Right, so to, oh, sorry.
Our green community's goal, that was, that was council adopted, is to maintain our, our canopy coverage, that's where it comes from. Part of what we're going to do here is going to create an entire strategy with our conservation manager of how to replant Milton, we've been talking about all different slogans, Grow Milton, you know, all these different things to be able to encourage planting in areas where people don't currently plant. But, to, I think it might be difficult to expect growth in our canopy coverage, considering we're not built out. There's still roughly 33% of our property that is buildable, and considering the current demand, trees are going to continue to go down. The council, if you want to adopt a, a different objective than, than you already have, we'll do our best to, to meet that objective, but it's not going to be with this tree canopy plan that we, that we currently have.
I mean, it could be a program that doesn't have to be approved by council, it could be an initiative.
Well, you know, the one thing I might, the tough thing here- Is, you know, what most people, no matter where you live, I believe what most people in Milton love about Milton and want to see are blackboard fences and pastures and horses, that's just, you know, and they want to save that. And unfortunately, that's the opposite of tree canopy and saving trees, that's less trees, so, again, we get this quandary of, you know, do you plant more trees or not? So it's, that's a tough one, and that's, you know, on the, the larger lots, yeah, I mean, I'm all in favor of the most incentives and less trees and ordinances and all that, you know, so hopefully people will do the larger lots, but, yeah, it's a tough, you know, it's tough trying to maintain a canopy, or add to it, or not, it's, we're different than the-
If I may add, if we look at those objectives, do you have those objectives? Our objective was a dual objective of to balance our, maintain the tree canopy, and also to preserve and enhance the root character of Milton, right? So we are trying to balance the dual objectives of these two, and personally, I think this tree preservation ordinance that has been written by a number of Citizens Committee members, the Planning Commission, it does do a good job in balancing the dual objectives.
Okay, no, and, and I would agree, I'm just saying, it's tough, you know, this is a tough discussion, because, you know, there's different options, all right, Peyton?
So what if, like, our three-acre estate lots, it's kind of, I think, what we would like to have in Milton, if we, if someone wants to create a pasture to have an estate lot, I mean, we're penalizing them for doing that, and so, you know, I think we're going in the wrong direction.
But I think what staff is saying-
We need a stopgap.
They're working on, on another ordinance that would help that, but, to your point, yeah, maybe we need something in between-
Just a stopgap to put it in.
That, to make sure that, you know, just in that window-
You will need that, because that's, that is, that's several months away, and really, you can go anywhere on the spectrum, you can go from having absolutely no regulation on three acres plus, to the same regulations you have on, on regular one-acre AG lots.
And that's what I was going to throw at, I mean, that would be, maybe, and it's extreme, but I, I'd certainly consider, you know, there's no regulations on three acres or minimum, or three acres or greater, but I don't, that may be a little too extreme, but, I don't know, what you guys think?
So, also, something that hasn't come up, that we probably should mention, is that there is waivers available in tree ordinance. So anybody can apply for a waiver with the Community Development Department, and it would be an administrative waiver, so they can get a waiver from anything of the ordinance, they just have to show that they meet the four criteria that's listed under, it's the same criteria that's used for a warrant, an administrative variance, so they would just have to show how they're not-
That criteria won't work for, if you're looking, if you're looking to create a pasture in, on a five-acre lot, I think, I think you're going to have a difficult time supporting a waiver for that, for that purpose, I think.
Maybe.
Considering what the, considering what the tests are to be able to do that.
And then, well, the other thing we have in place in the ordinance is alternative compliance, so if you can't plant all the trees on your site, you have, you have two options, basically, you can find a tree bank, which is basically another property in Milton that will allow you to plant trees on their site, and you also have the tree fund alternative, where you can pay some of the money into the tree fund, instead of planting everything on the site. So, the thing with the tree bank is, though, you can only do half the trees on somebody else's site, you still would have to plant half the requirement on your site, and with the tree fund, you can only pay for one-third, and you have to plant two-thirds.
Unfortunately, I think that's going to defeat what they're trying to achieve with incentivizing the larger lots.
There's a conflict, and so I think, what I hear, at least I hear from some of us, is that the larger lots trump the trees, that-
I think that's about as straight as you can put it.
Yes, and so if someone wants to move here, and they want to have a three, three-to-five acre lot, and they want to clear it for pasture, I am, that is more of a priority for me than the tree ordinance, and so, I want to be very careful with this, because I know the first time around, I didn't understand that with the first tree ordinance, so, I want to make sure that that is conveyed here tonight in this work session, if we have to have a plan for the stopgap in between the tree ordinance and the zoning solution, I want to know what that is.
I think you're, you're hitting that discussion right now.
Yeah.
But don't you think we're also talking about too small, I mean, you can't have horses on three acres, you've got a house.
I don't care if it's horses, or llamas, or chickens.
Incentivize just larger lots, less homes.
It's not necessarily about the use anymore, when you're talking about this.
It's about the, it's about do, having our larger, the three-acre-
Yeah, the encouragement of that.
I mean, I threw that out earlier, I mean, again, I may be too excessive, but, you know, at almost at three acres and above, have no, have no restrictions.
And that, that three-acre lot could be a 10,000-square-foot house with a beautiful paved backyard with pool and poolhouse and all that, that could also exist on the three-acre lot, so it's just a matter of what it is you're, you're trying to accomplish, would you rather have that house on the three-acre lot with no trees, or would possibly have the alternative?
I think we have to think, you know, unfortunately, the average person's thought of tree loss, or cutting down trees, is negative because of development, but I think if you think through this, where it's like, hey, you know, if we're going to have huge yards lots and a lot less houses, and the trees go down, then they would probably be in favor of it.
And I feel like, if we had to roll the dice, that if someone's going to buy a three-acre lot, and they're going to plant that lot and landscape it to a standard that we should allow them that flexibility. A three-acre lot in Milton is not anything, you know, I mean, we need to think about if the three acres is pasture or forested, and maybe the percentages that slide around with that, which is, you know, I, but, but that's the priority for me.
I just don't want to go down this rabbit hole, but I was worried, so, let's go to an example, let's say it's zero.
Or something.
Yeah, well, let's say that extreme example, zero. I'm a developer, I come in, I got, I'm going to plow it, right, to do three-acre lots, clear it, does anything prevent them from later on replating that to one-acre lots? See, that's what I wonder.
Yeah, that is a problem.
I'm clearcutting everything, maybe after a few years, I can further subdivide the thing into-
Yeah, that's-
Parag, isn't there an issue? Isn't there an issue with subdividing a subdivision, actually? Let me, let me run that over to you.
Well, you know, do some like one-
There's, there's an issue there, I don't think it's as easy as it sounds, I apologize to volley that over to you.
Yeah, from the state, give me, give me some context.
So, let's say you have a nine-acre lot, and you subdivide that into three, three-acre lots, and then you clear it, and then you subdivide it into nine one-acre lots, that's what you're trying to avoid.
You take a three-acre lot and divide it.
Right, so, I was, I was under the impression, there's a term, I thought, that you can't, you, to subdivide a subdivision.
Is there a way?
Well, no, I mean, as, as long as you're within your subdivision regulations, you can continue to do that.
I think you're right, Steve, though, I think there is something that says you can't have two minor-
Yeah.
I think you can only divide it once, and then you can't go back.
There's some issue for a minor. I apologize, and I apologize, I don't have further on that for you, but I remember this.
And maybe there's, you know, the other thing, you could have some kind of rule in there, where if somebody does do that, you know, once they clearcut it, there's a two, three, four-year window where they can't do anything, or five-year, you know, whatever, or big Q5 or something, where they can't re-subdivide.
I mean, we'll get more information on that subdivision of the subdivision for you.
So, but I think the point, now, I'm speaking for myself, and I'm hearing a little bit from council, is, I know from my, my position, would like to see where a three-acre or larger lot has very minimal restriction on it, so that it would promote, you know, it would not hamper someone from having a bigger lot, or whatever, whether it's equestrian, or, or, you know, just a large house, or whatever, I mean, you know, one rooftop versus three, or whatever, I'd want to incentivize that.
And keep in mind, you are going to be able to get another stab at this, when it comes back before you again, we're just looking to try to get it right this time, this time around, so when we have to bring it back before you, there's, you're not going to have to wrestle with too much.
So we decided-
Some general direction would be great.
Make sure, so we decided on eight inches on the DBH, and then we didn't, did we? Is that right?
I think the eight inches, I think it's still, I mean, that's, that's what's on there now, but there may be a little bit of discussion by the time we vote on, is that, say, say?
Eight inches will be coming before you in the, in the ordinance, but again, that's absolutely-
We could change it at that point, but be thinking about that.
The fee, did we, on the fee?
We didn't, we didn't make it sit on the fee, did we? And I think staff was saying, you don't really hear, I get more complaints about people having to do it, but not having to pay a fee, but you guys may have a different thought on that.
I just would like to, you know, see, see the fees, you know, when we have a developer coming in to do a one-acre, one home-per-acre subdivision, I'd like to see that, that fee.
Right, well, those are different, so this is just a true mobile.
It's like somebody in their garden, wants to have one three-
Developers, they have a plan, a weekly, and all the other stuff they got to pay.
And permits and all that.
So my only issue is, if we're going to go from 15 inches to eight inches and be more, be more, more restrictive, I think we should remove the fee, but, that's just, I know, it's just a token, is all it is, really, but.
And I agree with that.
You know what, let me say this, how about, it's a good discussion, but before it comes before, maybe if you guys could look and, and give us, you know, you say it's a token, but see what that dollar amount is, what that cost, based on past.
20 grand.
Okay, 20, okay, sorry if I missed that. What else?
Do you want to have any further discussion on the large lots, or do you want it to appear as is?
Help me here, I don't.
Well, I don't want it to appear as is, because I don't want to go through this whole same thing with council. Maybe give us another alternative at our council meeting, I don't know.
It's really just a spectrum between.
Is it just a canopy coverage, that like, just a number we gotta pick for a three acre lot? I mean, is that as easy as that?
There's no science at this point behind it.
So, here, here's a suggestion, okay? So, for a three acre, you know, to incentivize three acre.
Three larger, three or larger, gotcha.
If, if, if the current property is pasture, say like, less than 10%, um, there would be no recompense.
Well, they would just have to maintain what they have, but they wouldn't have to bring it up.
Okay.
That's the current regulation.
Okay, so, and i- if there was 60% coverage, then the owner could go down to.
57.
30 or 40, I mean, if it's.
Right, right now it's 57.
Yeah, we need to come with a lower number.
Because we're trying to make this easier on them.
25 is what I was just.
Okay, so whatever, whatever the percentages, I mean, I'd say.
I'd be good with 25, only because that would give, you know, they wouldn't just totally clearcut it, but.
This is only a stopgap, really, for when we do the zoning, so that's why.
The zoning will ultimately mirror what you're looking for here, um.
With, with the, the incentive is gonna be in there for the view shed. If, if the lot is, right, for the tree ordinance.
You'll get the 20% incentive if you are, if it's a minor subdivision.
60 feet from, okay.
And, uh, and if it's a, if it's a preliminary plat or major subdivision, same thing, um, there'll be no, it's the same 60 feet, but you, there's, you don't get the 20% benefit.
But, okay, question, if you can tree bank.
I'm sorry.
If you can tree bank, if you can, I mean, can you sort of buy your way out? If I came in and, and wanted to buy five acres and say, hey, I'm gonna do this, that and the other thing, couldn't I just put a bunch of trees elsewhere?
You could.
Okay, so really, do, do all these designations matter?
Well, the only reason they would matter, um, that could be very expensive. So you might say, well, so the five acres, if I gotta pay all this money to tree bank, I'm gonna do, you know, five lots or two lots or.
How much is a, is a eight inch tree or a six inch tree or five inch?
I'm sorry, when you say tree bank, are you talking about the planting on another property? Or, okay, so the planting on another property alternative is there, but you can only do half. The way the ordinance is written right now is you can only plant half. So if you're required to have 40%, you could only plant 20% on another property and you would still have to plant 20% on yours.
Let's go with the argument that you can adjust on a, on a greater than three acre lot, there is no minimum that you can plant in a tree bank. How much, how much is, how much is it to plant one four inch DBH tree? That'll, that'll turn, that'll, that's, that'll end up being a 1,600 foot canopy.
Well, it, it's gonna vary depending on the species and where you get it from and all that, but it could range from 500 to 1,200. I'm sorry to be vague on that, but it's.
That's alright, and, and what do you current, if you're not going to tree bank and you're gonna tree fund it instead, what would you pay for that?
So the tree fund alternative compliance is you can pay for one-third.
Let's just pretend it's 100% for over three acres, that you can use the whole, that, that, there is no limit on three plus acres. How much is it per tree?
So it's based on the square footage requirement, you have to pay 3125 per 100 square feet. Does that make sense? So basically, if you were required to have, I tried to make the math simple, 10,000 square feet. So that means 3,300, whatever, you could pay into the tree bank. So for every 100 square feet, you pay the 3125. So if you want me to do the math real quick. Oops, I didn't do that right.
So it seems what the city council is looking for some more options for the larger, more than three acres. One option could be 270%, could be 35%. Are the other options could be have more incentives so that the tree could be planted somewhere else?
They still have to pay for it, yeah.
Maybe we can run some numbers for you.
Have some options and, and say yes or no, but I, I, I would like to see an option that's a very small percent, 25 or less to, to incentivize someone to do a bigger lot. And then, you know, we can have the other options if we want to have the tree bank and this and that and keep it up higher.
I think we know what your questions are, it'll be, it'll be fairly simple, we'll get you that information ahead of time so you can, uh, you can think about that. And we're gonna turn this thing around to you fairly quickly.
Good, I think Peyton's got a council report.
So, on the three acres or larger, we're just talking residential, right?
Talking residential.
Okay.
Yeah, did anybody else?
Carol wants council reports.
Joe, do you got anything?
I have nothing to say.
Laura?
I'm setting a world record.
Tammy, do you want to say anything? As a Milton citizen?
I am hungry, so.
Alright, alright, thank you, thank you guys, we'll conclude the work session.
Thank you.